Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education Board's Special Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now five oh eight P M. Apologies for delay start as we have some difficult technology issues at the moment. And with that, I have in no particular order, as I can see my screen, I have board members Marielle and Flaherty Ludwig, Ashley Gulyas, Jasmine Pressy, Cara Baiki, Janine Randolph, Howard White, Sherry McCready Pritchett with me this evening. And I also have Dr. Estrella and her cabinet. So if we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. Thank you. So this special meeting tonight has been called due to time sensitive items that require a vote. In consideration of team members and colleagues currently on vacation and working remotely, holding a meeting virtually ensures broader participation and allows for timely decision making without delaying any critical actions. Thank you, everyone who took their time to join us this afternoon. I know that, you know, being summer and everybody is either working or not vacation. It's very difficult, but I just wanted to take the time to thank everyone that is here online and participating this evening. So the first item on the agenda for tonight is the appointment of School Preparedness and Safety Supervisor. So I'm going to transfer the meeting to Dr. Estrella for that item for any type of discussion.
So good evening, members of the Board and Cabinet, as well as the public that is watching us virtually. The School Preparedness and Safety Supervisor is a position that the Board had spoken greatly about, particularly because of all of the safety concerns that have been coming to life across the nation with some of the violence that has been experienced nationally. But most importantly, we wanted to make sure that we had enough personnel supporting safety and security across our district so that we can effectively support our school leaders, as well as continue to develop systems that would effectively have a proactive and supportive approach to student behavior intervention and engagement. I'm going to ask Sandra Fiois, who leads this team, to speak further about the role, but also talk in greater detail about the candidate that we're proposing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Estrella. Hello, Board, and thank you so much for having us. It is with great pleasure that I approached this topic. It's been a long time coming. For quite a while now, we've only had a single person in charge of school safety, which makes it particularly difficult if Ryan Harold is ever on vacation or if he ever has to be out like we found ourselves this spring. The Board had expressed some desires to have a second person be brought onto the team for all the reasons that Dr. Estrella just named, but also so that we have backup in case a person is out. It seems like it's been a long time coming, but it's something that was important to everybody on the team to ensure that there are no gaps while people are receiving either the time off that they are afforded or if they need other care. Jonathan Kinney is no stranger to the school safety team. He has been working alongside Ryan Harold since two thousand and twenty-two. He has been a member of our District Reunification Team. He's also a member of the District Safety Team. In that capacity, he has worked to revise a lot of our safety procedures and protocols, made sure that we are advocating for students with our Behavior Intervention Guide. He has been working as the Jefferson Safety Coordinator since two thousand and twenty-two. And prior to that, he was at Ponus, and I think prior to that, he had a brief stint at Ryan McMahon High School. But in his role as the Safety Coordinator, he was really instrumental in making sure that the school community was safe. Jefferson is a diverse community, and it has, it's in sort of like an urban center, like you all know. So there are concerns that come up at Jefferson that are unique to that school site, and Jonathan has been really a standout. So when he approached with interest in filling in as the interim acting safety preparedness director in Ryan's absence, we gladly accepted. And he was able to show us that not only can he take the reins in terms of school safety and the district-wide procedures and protocols, but he also can work with the capital improvements that we have been undergoing for the last three years. And with that, it was a great relief to us to have him volunteer in that capacity and step up in that capacity, but also just to really get to know the skill set that he brings to the team and see how it is that he can be uniquely qualified as somebody who has done school safety for a number of years now and is also a staunch advocate for our students. With that, I'm going to either turn it over to Dr. Estrella or Dr. Estrella. Jonathan is also here. It's really up to you how you wish to proceed, but I'm excited about today.
Thank you, Ms. Fiois. I wanted just to give Jonathan an opportunity just to share a few words, and then we'll turn it over to the Board.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jonathan Kinney. As I've been introduced, thank you for having me here today. And I'm honored to be speaking today at this meeting. Like was said about me already, I spent the past three years at Jefferson. Obviously, you know, working with our building safety and the safety protocols that go along with that. But what I think is most important is the relationships I have developed with families and the community at large, because that's really what safety is all about, is dealing with the people that are in the building. You know, buildings can be improved, systems can be added to, programs can be bought, but developing the relationships and procedures that go along with everybody in the community being safe is really what I think is the most important and what I hold as the most important part of my job. So I'm honored to be here today. Thank you for having me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that come up.
So I turn it over to the Board for questions.
Hi. I just had to ask the question. So this was a position that we already had budgeted and was in the budget that we voted on already, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
This was a position that was advocated for for some time by the Board and was included as part of the reconciliation of this coming year's budget.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Is this position a grant position?
Yes.
What grant it is?
It's in the Alliance Priority Schools District Grant.
And Ryan Harold still out at this time?
Yes, he is, sir.
So I don't have a question, but just a comment, which is that I'm so happy to see this position finally filled. School safety is something that is very important to me. It's something that I ran on in two thousand and twenty-one. And I know we, as you mentioned, Dr. Estrella, have been talking about the need to have at least one more person on this team. You know, the work that Ryan Harold has been doing is incredibly difficult work and stressful, and he's done a great job, but I'm really glad that he has some more support here. I think that, you know, when things happen in the district, when we have any kind of threats or lockdowns is when we really hear from our community and from our parents. And that's really when the, you know, kind of questions and concerns and really like cries for what are we doing? Are we doing enough seem to come up to the top? So I think that this is, you know, one way which we can hopefully make our parents and the students and community feel like we hear them and that this is equally important to us. So thank you very much, Mr. Kinney, for stepping up here and welcome to the team. I know you've been on the team, but to this team formally.
And Cara, I echo your comments. For a long time, this Board has advocated for making this department bigger and for providing more support. I think that hearing Mr. Kinney talk about the fact that he's developed relationships with the families, I think that it's important that we have additional safety and security in our buildings. Again, like I said, we've advocated for that. It's unfortunate that we didn't already have this in place, but now we're forced to do that. And so I look forward to the work that Mr. Kinney will provide to us. Welcome.
So this is also a central office position. It's not a student-driven position, correct?
It is a central office position that is student-driven because of the supports in place. Not only is he like Ryan providing overarching supports district-wide, but they will also be supporting students that engage in potential expulsion or suspensions and also working hand in hand with school leaders in buildings to ensure that protocol systems and structures are in place so that students are safe.
So this, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So like all central office positions, we are in service of schools. We are in service of students. So the role will encompass interaction and engagement with families and students.
So also then that also means, so this is a, this is a non-union position. He's coming from a union position, correct?
Correct. It's a non-affiliated role.
So what does that mean? Does that open up a position for someone else to fill it?
I think that during the RIF process, unfortunately, there were individuals, sorry. There were individuals that were shifted. This gives Jonathan an opportunity to continue in the work that he had been doing in the district and doing well, which because of the RIF process wouldn't have afforded him that opportunity this upcoming school year.
Okay. I have an additional. Yes, yes. I know, Dr. Shaw, you just mentioned that serving servicing families and students. Can you describe like how much of his time and or Ryan's is spent in the school? So it's a fifty-fifty in the buildings. I know the position supports, but just the buildings.
Ryan, Ryan Office is like really close to mine, and I never see Ryan in Central Office because most of his time is in schools. Same thing with Jonathan. When schools are actively are actively open or summer school is in action, most of them is spent in the school buildings and very minimal time is spent in Central Office.
May I expand on that, Dr. Estrella? I don't know if if everyone realizes, but Angela King, who had been in charge of student suspensions and expulsions, was one of the positions that was cut when these central office reductions came about. So Angela King's position was totally student-facing because it was more in the advocacy of the students. And then when if the student was had to serve an expulsion because it was something that the law absolutely demanded it, she then would serve as the superintendent designate. So now the role that Jonathan and Ryan have have to also absorb that. So there's that student-facing aspect of it that will take quite a bit of time because we no longer have a person that's just designated for that. So we're gaining a person, but I also lost a person on that team that was a critical member of the team during the cuts. And then the rest of the time, like Dr. Estrella said, is spent at the schools, not only just looking at to make sure that schools are safe, but there's oftentimes where they're in consultation with school leaders because of other concerns that are at the schools or just doing rounds or, you know, doing things like safety checks and other inventory types of things that we do. But most of, I would say seventy-five percent of their time is student-facing. Probably another fifteen percent of the time is adult-facing at schools. And then the remainder of the time has to do with the capital improvements that we've put in place with mutual link, with ambient A I and those other pieces that we've done with school cameras and those other things.
I'm glad you brought that up, Sandra. Thank you for explaining that. However, Angela King, she was working closely with Ryan Harold, correct?
Correct.
So her position was cut, correct?
Correct.
So if this grant was an opportunity, why wasn't the opportunity presented to her before?
It was.
Or she turned it down?
Yeah, she turned it down. Angela King has found another job at a different school district. She just, this, this is a very different role than what she was doing, but it was presented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for that breakdown. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Marielle.
Yes, I appreciate that breakdown. Also, Sandra, I have a question for Mr. Kinney. When you're looking at the time you've spent as an interim, I'd like to know what was the most satisfying in terms of student behavior and outcome for this time that you were in the position?
Let me unmute. Sorry, as we're speaking, I'm dealing with, we got an alarm from Brian McMahon High School. So that's why I'm on the phone here. So in the time that I've been, you know, in for Ryan helping out, I've been doing a lot of what I've already been doing for the past three years with, with talking with parents especially. Dr. Estrella came in one day and because a parent had contacted her about a problem that she was having that she wanted resolved, and I was able to work through that with her, you know, listen to, hear her out, you know, listen to what her concerns were. I was able to address those concerns with the administrators at the building and have a good conversation with her about the expectations involving the student, you know, her son, and what was going on there. And it ended up being a very good conversation where we understood, I was able to explain our protocols to her, why things were safe. And, you know, we were able to leave it in a very pleasant way, maintaining a good relationship because her son's going to be moving on into one of the high schools. So, you know, just working with parents like that, offering a calm voice, hearing them out, addressing their concerns, because I was able to do that too. You know, kind of like I've been doing for the past three years at Jefferson, just on a bigger scale. So that was very satisfying. I always like to leave a good parent interaction with making sure that we're all professional and leaving on good terms.
I appreciate that answer.
Thanks.
I have one more additional question, but I just want to make sure Marielle got in. You mentioned the, the, the position is Alliance, the grant through Alliance?
It's the Alliance Priority Schools Grant.
Okay. Is that what? I know we have that on the agenda. Is that a stable one?
Yeah, that is not one of the ones that has been threatened yet. I mean, we always say yes, but yeah, it's in the Alliance Priority Schools Grant. There's a piece of it that allows us to apply for school wellness and school climate. And so that's where the the position align to.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for all that additional information. Definitely, you know, understood and the importance of safety, especially in this climate nowadays. And I know that a lot of families have been questioning. And that was the decision as to why we also felt that it was very important to have a second person on safety. And with that, I need a motion to appoint Jonathan Kinney as School Preparedness and Safety Supervisor. I may not be able to see you, so if you could say your name when you raise your hand and say aye. Please, Pritchett, motion. Okay. Motion by Cara, seconded by McCready Pritchett. Seconded by Sherry. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 No for Howard.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. Thank you, Howard. Next item of the agenda, the ratification of tentative agreement with Collective Bargaining Unit UPS EU Custodians Maintenance and Security effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Dr. Estrella?
Thank you. So we had a really productive and collaborative conversation with the custodial bargaining group, and we have a tentative agreement that we reached. The average overall salary increase year after year is about two point seven to three percent. And the insurance increase every other year is about point five percent. They asked for Juneteenth and Eid, which are holidays that we've added to the calendar to be added to their new, new contract, which is something that made sense to add. And we are looking for the Board to consider the approval of this tentative agreement.
Thank you. Any questions before I move? All right, I need a motion for the ratification of tentative agreements with Collective Bargaining Unit UPS EU Custodians Maintenance and Security effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved, Ashley?
Ashley is seconded by Jasmine. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. So the next item on the agenda. After legal guidance, the current contracts between the Board and Dr. Estrella requires that the Board vote on a new contract prior to July first, which vote the Board did not take. Dr. Estrella has indicated her willingness to amend the contract to defer the requirements for Board action to a later date. So item C is discussion and possible action to delegate the Board chairperson authority on behalf of the Board to amend the Board Superintendent contract. No contract extension at this time. Any discussions, questions at this time from Board members?
So what's the purpose and the reason for the amendment? If there's no discussion or reference to the extension?
We still have to discuss. The amendment is changing or pushing the extension to a later date because we had already entered into negotiations earlier this year. And because we were already in negotiations, we have to make an amendment, and it has to be voted on. And it was supposed to be voted on before July first.
Where in the, in the contract does it says that? I didn't see that.
It's in the contract. I've spoken to legal three times confirming it all. When you can see the contract publicly, so.
I did. I was reading that. However, I'm still lost on this because if it's not, we're not discussing extending her contract, then what's the purpose for the amendment?
You have to remember too, she is an employee of North Public Schools.
I understand that.
And there are other items on that contract that.
But what do you want to do all, what do you want to do?
No. No, because since she requested an extension and we had started negotiations, per her contract, we had to have voted by July first. That does no and void anything now just because there is no extension.
Exactly, but she waived that right, correct?
No, she did not.
She waited to move it forward.
The extension, but she did not, but she did not waive it. She agreed in discussion to move it. She has not waived her rights to.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't we just have, why wouldn't we just open it up in reference to extending and discussion in reference to extending it? You're, but you basically just indicated that, you know, she waived the contract extension part of it. So this, that's where I'm lost at. So if she waived that right, and then now we're asking to, to vote on to amend it. I'm confused. I'm truly confused. So what are we amending?
We are amending, moving the extension to a later date. The negotiations have already started.
When's the, when's the extension later date gonna be?
It's gonna be in September.
We need to do Dr. Estrella's review, Howard, and that's something that we would have done in the spring retreat in June. And if you remember, that got canceled. So we have to have the retreat in September to do Dr. Estrella's review.
I know that you may not be able to give details. Are there other, are there, there are other amendments also? There, there's nothing else other than just the movement or the, the pushing of the extension?
We can't discuss anything that's in negotiations at the moment because of confidentiality. But she is an employee of North Public Schools.
Okay. And just to clarify for folks who maybe have not seen this process before, the process of us voting to delegate for the Board Chair to sign the contract is pretty standard, correct? Like.
Correct.
The standard, right? Every year, one individual, the chair signs, whomever that chair may be. And it's, the Board has still discussed what the items are. Like, we know what the contract is, but one individual signs. The entire Board does not sign. So that piece of this is just standard procedural.
Correct.
Just for folks who.
For anyone that has, that's always been a procedure forever. It's always been that the Board has to give the chair. Any other questions, concerns? Sherry, I know that you were going to say something, but I don't know if you other.
Yes, I just am in supportive of moving forward because I want to make sure that we are in compliance. Right now, we are out of compliance with her contract, and at minimum, we need to be able to do that. So I will support this.
Okay, thanks, Sherry. All right, so I need a motion for action to delegate the Board Chairperson authority on behalf of the Board of Education to amend the Board Superintendent contract with no contract extension. Motion.
McCready Pritchett motion to move this forward.
Thank you. Seconded by Cara. All in favor, please say aye and state your name because I can't see everybody.
Aye.
Aye.
Marielle.
Ashley.
Thank you. And a no?
No from Howard.
Thank you, Howard. Next item, approval to authorize Superintendent Dr. Alexandra Estrella to execute any and all agreements and other documents, including the engagement letter necessary to retain the outside counsel to represent the Board of Ed in the insulin pricing lawsuits. Dr. Estrella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll have Lunda speak in greater detail because he's been collaborating with the city. The city is joining this class action lawsuit that I am recommending the Board to also participate in. This is not a lawsuit against us. This is a lawsuit that we will be putting on behalf of the district. And this lawsuit is as a result of overcharges in insulin prescriptions when we were self-insured back in two thousand and two. This was happening over a course of approximately ten years. And the city, as well as many municipalities across the country and states, as well as districts that had this alleged incident happen are participating in this class action lawsuit. So in order for us to be participants, I would need the Board's approval to sign on behalf of the Board of Education in being active participants in the class action suit. Mr. Osmani, did I miss anything?
No, you didn't. Again, as, as you indicated, this is a national lawsuit that targets major our insulin manufacturers, Eli Lilly, Novo Nordisk, Sanofi, and these are all pharmacy benefit managers. So the allegations in the lawsuit are that they engage in anti-competitive practices and deceptive pricing, which artificially inflated the price for insulin. How this impacts the B O E is that because we are jointly working with the city and when we were self-insured, we were jointly self-insured with Express Scripts. That's the firm that was our pharmacy benefit manager. And this was for a period from two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen. And this was for a period from two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen. So this does make the Board of Ed um potentially eligible for compensation due to these inflated uh pricing. As far as action so far, uh the city council, common council took action on June twenty fourth. Uh, they voted to move forward with it and we are working with the attorneys um as well. But because we're, we're a standalone entity, but we're also a part of the city when we were self-insured. And so for legal purposes, they do need the board to kind of agree to join the city in moving forward. The common council um has already done so. And so what we're asking today is just uh for your approval to allow, to authorize the superintendent to move forward and sign any documentation that require uh the superintendent's signature. Uh, the mayor has already signed on behalf of the city for this.
Thank you for that information. Can I ask uh just a clarifying question that this there's no cost to the district to join this class action lawsuit?
Correct. Uh, there's no cost to the district nor to the city. What they will do is whenever they recover, they will work on a contingency and a, a, a portion of that revenue will go towards. Uh, we do have a number of districts in the state that have already signed up. Uh, in addition to us, the City of Hartford, City and Schools, Bridgeport, City and Schools, New Haven, City and Schools, Waterbury, City and Schools have already signed up. Um, as we're going through the summer, more and more cities will also be signing up for this, not only in the state but outside of the country. It'll be similar to the tobacco lawsuit, if you remember a few years back. Um, so it's very, very similar. But again, there is no out-of-pocket cost to the district or the city um at this time.
So again, this is the kind of situation where um these companies were overinflating their prices so that people who we ensure, so an employee potentially has a family member who has to have insulin was paying more than they should have been paying for insulin, and this was going on since two thousand and two. Right. And so the way this class action works, assuming that they win it, the attorneys will collect their piece of money and then we will potentially get money from them per the money that we lost when they were overinflating their prices. Correct? Sherry? Yes.
I just want to be sure about that. I mean, I think this is something that, I mean, simply, we need to get involved with this.
What about the actual um employees and their families who were paying these inflated prices? Are there any um you know, rewards for them here, or does it just all come to the district?
No, so this is part, part of the lawsuit. So depending on what's the allegation substantiated, uh determination will be made on what portion of this was overpaid by the employee, what portion was overpaid by the district, and the distribution will be made accordingly. So um the employees who overpaid will also be compensated as part of this.
Got it. Yeah, it seems like a no-brainer.
Thank you, Linda.
And which, if I could ask, which department receives the funds whenever it happens?
Well, because we were self-insured, and so at the time of self-insurance, we had two buckets. There was a Board of Ed. Just as is now, there's a Board of Ed bucket and there's a city bucket. And so once the determination, the calculations are done, um the, the refunds, for lack of a better word, will go to those respective will go to those respective units, um in terms of where the money was, was spent out of. But our internal service fund, it is one big fund that's a city fund with multiple buckets between the board and the city, and so uh we'll determine how that get redistributed between the entities.
Linda, is there any uh timeframe on this?
No, there is not at this time. As some, as you know, these things take some time. Um, trying to get, once to get everybody signed up in the class action takes time, and then the court will eventually play its course. So this will probably take some time to get resolved.
And regarding Dr. Shoya's time commitment, is there anything once, if given the approval to sign, what else would take? You know, that she would have to give her time to. Are there appearances? Are there meetings? Are there discuss, like you get what I mean?
I don't.
Sure, um, we're represented by council, and so council will be the ones making most of the face time. I mean, we've already had to prepare. Um, you know, we've already had to pull contracts uh with, with the providers and the pharmacy managers. So most of the work will be done on the backend. Um, but in terms of giving testimony and, and those types of things, many of the people that are involved are no longer with the city or with the district. And so most of the time will be dedicated by the attorneys representing us.
Thank you.
I think one of the things, Jasmine, just for, for your awareness, because um we've done this uh in other cases, um similar circumstances. I would uh keep the board in, informed if we need to go into an executive session to further discuss the ma- the matter, we would. And we would have the attorneys involved present to ju- just um provide the board with updates and uh whatever relevant information in regards to the case that the board might have to take further action at a later time.
So I need a motion to authorize superintendent Dr. Alexander Australia to execute any and all agreements and other documents, including the engagement letter necessary to retain outside counsel to represent the Board of Education in the insulin pricing lawsuits.
Motion, Kara.
Motion by Kara, seconded by Jasmine. All in favor, please say aye, raise your hands. Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. And um the last item on the agenda is update on federal grants. Hopefully we get some good news.
Unfortunately, no. Um, so we wanted to provide the board with an update uh regarding where we stand with some of our federal uh dollars and uh the work that we've been doing uh as a team, just keeping uh track of the scope of where things are, the potential impact in the organization at large. And um with the hopes to further engage the board as we acquire additional information on how the board wishes to engage. Um, as the board uh maybe already heard, I uh said yesterday, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the president being able to eliminate departments uh which uh would, has placed the, the US Department of Education at risk of being eliminated. And um alongside that, there has been um certain actions that have been taken that uh has created circumstances where certain funding have not been released. And these fun, these funding sources are tied with current um jobs and roles that are critical for us to do the role. Can you uh transition to the next slide, please? So um the team today wants to provide uh the board, not only with some background information and how the federal government is looking at different components, but also helping define certain terms for clarity. I want, we want to take some time to look at uh the federal grants and the impact of some of these grants being um placed on hold. And then what are, what does that mean for us as a, as a learning community and the work that we need to do? So I'm gonna turn it now to Mr. Asmani and other members of the team that will be um presenting on different components of the federal grants and where we are.
Um, thank you, Superintendent. Can everybody see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so just to give some background, I'll give some background, and then uh Ms. Faiois and Mr. Gerlach will talk about the specifics of Norwalk Public Schools. I'm just, but what is impoundment? Um, impoundment is basically when the president delays or withhold funds that are already approved by Congress. So these funds have already been approved by Congress, but the president does have powers to impound, which is basically uh what is happening now. Um, these, this impoundment act was authorized in nineteen seventy-four, so this was when the law came into effect. Uh, why this matters to us is because every time funds are not released to us, it does mean fewer resources in this instance for schools. And potentially, if these funds are not eventually released, it does put pressure on states and districts to fill some of these pun- funding gaps. So the total impoundment at this point is anywhere between six point two to seven billion dollars, depending on um how you categorize the funding. But these are primarily key educational grants uh that are now unavailable. The way that this impounding is impacting is all of the states and territories in the United States. The total dollars that we're talking about amount anywhere between ten percent to fifteen percent of overall K through twelve funding. About seventeen percent and territories um are impacted by more than fifteen percent of their overall funding. As far as uh looking at the state, Connecticut, and then our local public schools level, so you could see that the six point two billion dollars is across these uh five uh major grants. Migrant education, our Title II, Title III, Title IV, and then what we refer to as the Twenty First Century Grants. So at the state level, at the national level, it's about fourteen point four percent. For the state of Connecticut, the total impoundment is forty-six point eight million dollars. Statewide, this is almost twelve percent of all education funding that comes to the state. We have begun our initial review of how this impacts our budget for this year. For Norwalk, it's a little over a million dollars at this time, which is about almost three point two percent of our overall grants. Um, Title II, Title III, and Title IV are impacted, and the next couple of slides, we'll go into detail in what these are. But it is also important to know that we do have a number of agencies in the community that partner with the school district to get some of these fundings. And the biggest partner here locally is the Carver Foundation. So they provide uh pre- uh before-school and after-school supports in our schools. Uh, this funding is only available to them and about eight hundred and forty thousand, these are numbers we just got today from Navelet at the Carver Foundation, is what they're looking at potential impacts to them. This is money that a hundred percent funds our students here in Norwalk public schools for before and after. So any loss of this funding is not just a loss to the Carver, but it means that we as a district will now have to determine how we continue to provide these uh before-school and after-school services. Uh, these are just preliminary numbers. We just learned of this, so these numbers will continue to grow. Uh, the Carver Foundation did receive, uh, early on, there were some reductions that they received, um, and we did have to work with the city to cover, to cover some gaps. I see Dr. Australia, you wanted to add a couple of points there.
You already, you already um stated it. I was just gonna reiterate, if the board recalls, we had some challenges. Um, one uh about two, about one or two years ago where the, the Twenty First Century Grants uh didn't come in at the level that we were expecting, and we collaborated with the city in getting additional resources to fund the Carver program to make sure that we had the before and after care and, and programming, because they also provide academic supports, homework help, and a number of different um support structures for our scholars. So losing this opportunity will deplete us from having some uh critical services that aid in maintaining uh the, the, the programming structures that have facilitated a lot of the positive academic outcomes that we've had thus far.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna pass it on to um, um Ms. Faiois and Jay Gerlach to go over the next couple of slides, just to give you some more detailed Norwalk-specific information.
Thank you, Mr. Asmani. So we have received a confirmation of which grants have been impounded. I mean, that's the information that we have so far. One of them is the Title II Part A um grant. So this is not to be confused with like Title I, which all schools get and go directly to the schools. Title II's purpose is really to enhance um curriculum, the curriculum department, um curriculum initiatives, uh and to improve the quality of effectiveness for teachers. Uh, currently, we're standing to lose four hundred and five thousand, almost four hundred and six thousand dollars, uh which is a, a big grant to, to be losing. And then um there are quite a few number of staff that are um funded through that grant. As you can see down there, when we say two point two FTEs, FTEs of the full-time employment positions, um it means that part of one person's salary is in there, and then two uh full salaries are in there. That's what that means when you see that. And there's also other programming there. The other one is Title III Part A. Now, Title III Part A, uh the purpose of this grant is to help us with our MLL population. Um, this could be anything from hiring teachers to uh support staff to everything like curriculum um development and professional development. Um, so the Title III Part A is one that has also been communicated to us. Uh, you can see that this grant is three hundred and eighteen um thousand dollars. So if you're doing the math, you could see that we're approaching um eight hundred thousand dollars at this point. And with this grant, we have four staff members that are paid for within this grant, as well as some other programming. And um Title IV, um actually, um Jay Gerlach, Mr. Gerlach is here, and we we had him join us because he has been instrumental in writing Title IV. Do you want to go over Title IV, Mr. Gerlach?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Jay Gerlach, Director of Grants. Good to see you tonight. So Title IV um is really one of those grants that just provides well-rounded education to improve academic achievement for students. Um, in years past, we've, it's supported a lot of our after-school arts programming. Um, it's supported technology, it's supported laptops, smart boards, those kind of things. And um as you can see below, we have about two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in that grant that we've been allocated for this year. And um there's no staff in it, but it does go towards really vital programs like our district-wide mentorship program, our workforce development, dual enrollment programs, um a portion of our IB program lives within Title IV, as well as student internship programs that we have um going on. So it's, it's a, it's a vital grant that Norwalk Public Schools relies on every year.
Uh, before you advance, because we don't know the other one that, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Gerlach for interrupting. These are the three that we have confirmation have been impounded. The next one we want to talk about as an update, but are there any questions regarding these three, the Title II, the Title III, and the Title IV?
So as of right now, we're losing possible, we're losing seven teachers. Seven staff. It's not teacher-staff.
It's staff, because this is a combination, a combination of um administrators, teaching staff, and support staff. And that's what, that's what it stands, yes.
So we're starting this school year minus those seven staff.
We, we haven't gotten notice yet. I'm sorry, Mr. Asmani, were you going to speak on what impoundment? Like, wh- what that means and what you've learned from the state? Is that what you were gonna do? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, from what went from the state, once it's impounded, there are about forty-five days for Congress to take action. That deadline expires August fourteenth. Um, and so in order for funds to be impounded, the president has to give notice to Congress, uh which he has. And then within the next forty-five days, Congress either um agrees with impoundment or disagrees with impoundment. So there's some technical things that happen. But we'll know for sure what happens on August fourteenth, whether the full amount is impounded, whether there'll be conversations and a portion of it is impounded. So there's a chance that we may not lose all of it. We may lose some, we may lose none. Uh, but everybody's being put on notice just so that you know what could potentially happen. So worst-case scenario is we lose, we lose all of it. Now, the other piece too is, this is money that flows through the state. So in the event that this money doesn't come to us, there is an option where the state intervenes um either through its savings or however tries to make districts whole. But we will know more um as we approach kind of like that August fourteenth, end of August timeline, to know what the actual impact is. For example, if it's totally impounded, we'll know that. And then we will know whether the state is going to provide any stopgap funding to keep us whole or partially whole. But potentially, to your point, Mr. White, uh, we are potentially looking at seven FTEs if this was impounded and if there's no additional funding that comes to the district.
So we'll know more, we'll know more um mid-August.
Right.
I, I think we need to also articulate that we have been in conversations uh with the city, the city um I, I think we need to also articulate that we have been in conversations with the city, the city and B E T. Are aware of this potential loss. And we've been in active communication with them just to make sure that they are, uh, uh. You know, abreast of some of the potential losses that are resulting in. The impoundment or potential like elimination of federal funding that has been critical to. Some of the programs that we have across the organization.
Mr. Asmani, Sheri here. So just to kind of put a point on how disruptive this is, can you just outline to us typically what happens with these grants? As we approach a new school year, what is the typical protocol that we go through?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Faiois on that one, because there is a timeline of grant notifications and, and all of that.
Thank you. So typically around now, we would have gotten some notifications of what has been allotted to us. So for the grants that are still safe. Like the one that we said, the Alliance Grade, the prior, the, um, the Alliance Grant, the Priority Schools Grant. Um, those amounts have already been shared with us. And they open up those applications in order for us to begin the planning for the opening of the school year. So we would have. Expected that from all our grants. And so. What this means for us is that if we move forward with the planning. Like let's just say if we consider ourselves flat funded and we move forward with the planning, because that's what we do even in our S B B conversations. Our school-based budget conversations is we assume a flat funding, just so that we could meet the deadlines of our budget. Um, and if we move forward with that, we're entering the fall. Uh, as if we were going to be getting these grants. And then. If, if we don't receive notice by August, or if we receive some sort of notice by August. It would actually mean that we would be scrambling to find out what do we do with these staff people? Or we would turn back to Dr. Estrella and to the board to say, um. Is this something that we go before the city? But we should know by, um, mid-August. What our stance is in terms of this funding. But we would have heard by now what our amounts are. I hope that answers that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I have a question. I'm just looking at this slide and I see here in the list of programs. The international baccalaureate programs, and I know that we have that embedded in. I think both of our high schools and most of our middle schools. I mean, what does that look like? You know, how do we? Like, does that mean like these programs literally get like extracted out of the schools? That like, that's what would happen?
I think we just went through the approval and accreditation process. It would be really unfortunate that we would have to do something of that nature. Depending on where this lands, I think we would have to regroup and have conversations about what we, how we prioritize and. Where we could potentially find a different, additional resources to maintain the programs that are in play. Particularly because any shift right now in personnel will. Create a new process that would engage bumping and rifting, which we just completed. Um, we would have to engage in that process again. So I, I think it's important. Just to tie to this and you can understand the complexity of what this would mean if we lose, lose these resources. Isn't it important for us to go into the conversation around Title IV Part D? Which is our MSAP grant, which is our magnet.
I'm sorry, can we advance the slide? Because it'll actually, that's, that was the next one. These, those were the confirmed ones. Yep, but go ahead.
So besides the traditional grants that we have been receiving in an ongoing yearly basis. As you recall, we applied for the Magnet School Assistance Program Grant. That allotted us over the course of five years, three million dollars. In that grant, we currently have nine FTEs. That provide an, an array of different supports. To bring to fruition the expectations of, of the magnet funding that we receive. Jay, do you want to speak in greater detail on this? Because I know you had some points you wanted to make about this before I go into other component.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Estrella. So yeah, the, the MSAP grant is a grant we received two years ago. It's a five-year grant, fifteen million dollars. Spread up, so spread out over the course of five years and it is led by Dr. Black and it is. At P Tech, Ponus and Kendall. And it's basically, you know, as you can see here in this slide. To attract a diverse group of students and desegregate public schools is really what it boils down to. And. So creating kind of an inter-district school and pathway. Centered around STEM and career readiness at those three schools, college and career readiness. And so, you know, while this isn't part of the impoundment that we alluded to earlier. This is a federal grant and knowing what we know about, you know, potential dismantling of the Department of Education. We just wanted to present this to the board so that they have this on alert. And just so the board knows that federal grants are on a different timeline. So state grants are on, uh. On July first to June thirtieth timeline and federal grants like this one are on a. October first to a September thirtieth timeline. So they're on a little bit of a different timeline. So we wanted to show you this in advance, knowing that October first seems just around the corner.
And given that this is tied to Title IV funding and we are learning that Title IV has, uh, is, it has been impounded. And the cut, the buzz is that these resources might not be available in future fiscal years. We have to assume that there is a possibility that these resources would also become obsolete. So we want to bring awareness to the board, because now we're talking about close to seven positions in the other. Federal fun- funds and an additional nine totaling approximately fifteen FTEs across the organization. And if we lose these resources and these resource, these fun- funding sources are not. Uh, replenished or provide, acquired in other ways. Then we are going to face a difficult challenge or of. Making personnel eliminations before the start of the academic school year. So at this point, we're, we're going to open it up for Q and A. But I thought it was important for the board to have context of where we are with federal grants. The work that the team has been doing, one, in keeping. Uh, up to date in terms of the shifts and conversations happening at the state, but also at the federal level. This is a continuously moving target. So as we acquire more information, we will keep the board abreast. So that the board can make the best informed decisions in terms of how we want to proceed moving forward. Uh, to, to make sure that we can continue to do as best as we can, given the current limitations. The best possible for children and families.
So my question is. Is it okay to ask a question? Is somebody else going to make some more presentation?
No, no, yeah.
So.
No, no, it was, um, we're up to Q and A.
So if this were to happen that we were, uh, um. Subject to losing our seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen staff. Then that would mean that we would be looking at the RIF process again per union contracts, right? We would be resorting to that in order to eliminate these positions before the start of the school year.
Potentially, unless we find sources in other places, yes.
Or, or if we get better news, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I had a question. How, is there anything? That we or the public who are listening and want to be involved can do as far as advocating? I mean, is this a reach out to your congressperson and. Encourage them to release these funds by that August fourteenth deadline, like? Um, anything that we can do to help advocate for this?
The impoundment is, is by the president. So I, I, I think the best course of action. Is advocating to our congressmen to take action, all right? Because they have until August. Luna, remind me, if I'm correct, August fourteen, fifteen, that forty-five day time span?
Yes.
So like reaching out and advocating for action that favorably supports maintaining the resources that. We were expecting, given what was approved, would hopefully help in, um. Encouraging them to understand the importance of. The schools maintaining these resources that have been instrumental in supporting families and students.
I mean, Ashley, we know our congresspeople are going to vote the right way. Um, I would say to anybody listening that the people who need to, you know, be hearing from their constituents. Are the congresspeople in the states who probably are not going to vote the right way on this. That's where I would be reaching out.
Uh, I, I, I agree that I feel. Pretty confident in our Connecticut congress folks, but I would still reach out to them. They should hear it and they, they keep track of everything. But I agree, wholeheartedly Kara, for anyone listening, for anyone here. You know, if you've got friends and family around the country and you can take a few minutes to share with them. Just how serious the implications of this are and encourage them to reach out to their congresspeople. That would be really important.
They take calls from non constituents as well. They do log them.
That's true.
Matter.
I mean, we're, we're losing so many resources, even with the dismantling of the Department of Education where. Thirteen hundred employees were released as of yesterday. And a lot of them played critical roles in supporting states around federal funding and aid. Now those individuals are not there to really provide the support and advocacy that we have been. Accustomed to and has been instrumental in effectively. Moving practice and work across the nation. So it's, um. Something to be concerned of. But any advocacy would obviously help. I think that, that's the conclusion of our presentation. I'm sorry that we don't have better news, but I, I thought it was critical for the board to be. Um, and the public to be informed of, of where. The federal aid, um. Empowerment process is, the impact of it and its implication and how we can effectively move forward as an organization. We've already had significant reductions made even after getting the six point five million dollars that. Will inevitably impact the effectiveness of the systems and structures that we have established. That have yielded such positive outcomes for us as an organization. Um, when we compare ourselves to other city school districts across the state. We are outperforming in so many ways. Um, even with graduation rate alone, being the only city school district with graduation rates over ninety percent speaks volume. To the work that our teachers, school leaders, paraeducators and other personnel. Have been doing on behalf of our students in collaboration with our families and community. Um, so. As we continue to advocate and, um. Speak on behalf of our families, I think it's important for the board to have awareness of. On the ground level, what the direct and immediate impact has been in some of these reductions and. We will continue to work alongside you to find the best possible solution in a not. Of best, the most ideal circumstances. So thank you for your leadership and for your support as we continue to navigate uncharted waters and territory. Because this has never happened before. Um, similar to the pandemic, every day we're learning something new and we will be proactively. Looking at ways in which we can find solutions to this challenging, uh, climate. I turn it over back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was here today. Um, like I said, you know, it's summertime and some of us are on vacation and working remotely. Um, thank you for the team and everyone that has worked really hard. Even during the summer, you know, people think schools are closed in summer, no one's working. But Dr. Stray and her team are constantly working as you see, you know, they're discussing all different types of. Subjects and grants and things like that. Um, so with that being said, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Jasmine, seconded by Ashley. Thank you, everyone. Good night.